This meeting of the Villarica Planning Board, Planning, Zoning Board of Appeals is called to order on November 17th at 6:00 PM. The first order is approval of the agenda. The agenda consists of old business with an approval of the minutes from October 20th, 2016, two items of new business, variants 0316 and variants 0416, staff comments, and then adjournment. Can I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. First item is old business, approval of the minutes for October 20th. This was the, the meeting where we approved the zoning board of appeals bylaws. It is the third page of the packet. Are there any changes, additions, modifications?
If we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. New business, first one is variants.
Before we go to the item, could I ask for a?
An insertion of?
Insertion, aye. I know that Mr. Mecklen is here to talk with us a little bit tonight. Could we ask, since, before we actually consider those, could we ask him to speak relative to one of those, to the question about one of those?
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any concerns with the time period of the posting? I think is, is the, the main issue that, since it looked like, from the email stream back and forth, this, the variants 0416 was, was, they were trying to hear it the beginning of December, and we could not find a, a time when we could have a special meeting and have a quorum, so then it was slated for this meeting, which is two weeks earlier.
Right. I've had that question raised in, in different ways, and I have looked into it, and my understanding, and I know Rhonda can correct me if, if I misstate any of the facts, but the published notice for consideration of this was published, the published notice was put in more than 14 days before this meeting, so that there is not any issue with a published notice. The sign that was posted on the property has not been posted up there for a full 15 days. It has not. So that is a, a technical issue related to the consideration of that particular variance. You know, if you ask me the specific question, is that in compliance with our ordinance, I would say no, because I'm, I can't tell you that it is. The question thus becomes, you know, what do you do about it? And there's two, well, three possibilities, I guess. One, you can just determine here tonight that it's not in compliance with the, the ordinance, and you just vote, you're not going to do anything on it, or you're going to turn it down for that reason. That's one possibility. The second possibility is that you listen and, and hear the substantive merits of it as to whether or not you think it's a good thing or not, and you can take action to pass it, knowing that it's subject to challenge. If somebody, you know, chose to attack it, that, that would be a ground upon which it could be attacked, if, if you were to approve it. I mean, you may, you may choose to, to deny it. The third thing that I can see that could be done to, to deal with this problem is that you take whatever action you're going to take based on, you know, what I've told you, and if, if you choose to just turn it down and deny it on that, what we probably will do, since it's the, it's the fault of the city, not of the applicant, that the sign was not posted a full 15 days before this, is that if you turn it down for that reason alone, that we'll probably take it to the city council for consideration as to whether or not they're going to, after the full 15 days has been approved, whether they would approve it, you know, once that problem was corrected. So tho- those are the three potential actions that I could see being taken. And, all right, I tried to think through the problem. It, it is, it is a technical problem, clearly. Not going to advocate that you ignore technical problems in the rules, because they are there for a reason, but I've given you a couple of ways that I think it could be addressed if you believe substantively that the variance would have been granted but for that technical violation on the sign notice.
Okay. So we have actually two errors on the city's part that negatively impact their request for variance. The, the, the UDC wasn't updated, and the sign wasn't posted on time.
On, on the UDC being updated, I don't know that that legally impacts the consideration of the variance. I acknowledge it, it should have been, the ordinance that was adopted on April 5th, 2016, should have been merged into the UDC, and it should have been put on the website. I don't have any explanation for you as to why it wasn't, should have been, but the fact that it wasn't, I don't think changes the fact that the, the ordinance, as it was adopted on April 5th, 2016, is the ordinance.
Well, it is legal, yes. It's just it had, there, there's been an impact on person before us.
On your consideration, probably, sure. I can understand that, because you didn't know what the ordinance was until you hunted it down.
Matthew, you had some other thoughts on?
So, David, does our ordinance require for variances that they be, the sign be posted up there for 15 days?
So I can hear.
I'm sorry. Does the ordinance, or does our ordinance require for variances that the sign be posted for 15 days, and that the notice requirement for the advertisement be?
It does.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question there. What, if we were to move on, forward on that? Sorry. If we were to move forward on this issue tonight and approve it, what liabilities do we have in terms of someone who wants to challenge that, overturn it? Is there a statute of limitations on how long someone has to do it? Suppose somebody gets upset about this four years from now, and says, you know, this place is just a mess out here. It never should have been this way.
If you were to approve it, there's a 30-day appeal period. They've got 30 days to appeal any decision that you makes, any decision that's made on the zoning ordinance.
And after that, the decision is final?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, has there been any, anyone come forward to the city administrator to make notice that the time has not been fulfilled about the posting? Or has anyone come forward and indicated that they are going to oppose this?
To my knowledge, no, but David Millar has been on vacation, so I would have to refer that to Vicky to see if she's aware of any commentary from the public.
No, I'm not aware. As part of the process, we just send letters out to the surrounding property owners, so that's also a part of the notice process. So outside of that, I've not received any word from them.
Well, I can answer that also, Larry, is, is, because I have made some inquiries, because obviously, you know, I, I want to know whether or not it's controversial in any way, and after doing this for a while, you get a feel for what might be controversial, and because this is a piece of property that's located right in the heart of a bunch of other commercial properties, you know, we haven't received any, any questions about it at all, and I can tell you, my gut feel is that we wouldn't have.
So, so basically what we're hearing is a form over substance issue?
Right.
And we really should go ahead and go forward, which I'm going to suggest, and it needs to be a motion, I'll make it, that we go ahead with a hearing, and with the zoning variance, and we go ahead and, and treat it as it has been posted correctly. The appeal process is available to the public if they feel that they have been wronged, and we can take it up at that time. That's my motion.
I don't, I don't know that we need a motion. We're just looking for some technical information as to the, the appropriateness.
Somebody needs to make the decision to move on.
If it appears to be appropriate, then we'll continue on with the agenda. And, and again, from my understanding is that, that the chances of, of anybody contesting this is small, and they do have an opportunity to do that, so.
I don't, I don't believe we denied anybody due process, and because, like I say, the appeal process is available, as counsel has said, and, and my vote is to move on with the agenda.
Vicky, would you introduce variants 0316 for us, please?
This is a request from the First Baptist Church. The address, 1483 Highway 78, Villarica, Georgia, 30180. They're represented by Mr. Jeff Powell. Well, I don't know if they've been called, excuse me. This is a request to enclose a detached carport with metal siding. Essentially, this request is related to an accessory structure that's out on the property right now. It is my understanding that they currently park one of their vans under the structure, and just due to some public safety-related issues or some break-ins, they wanted to secure the van upon, I evaluated the, the request based upon what's set forth by the ordinance. I did not see any substantial conflicts with the adopted city code. That property is zoned rural development, where it does allow for some interpretation, if you will, where it speaks to what some of the materials have to be on accessory structures. There was maybe a little bit of vagueness, so just in an overabundance of caution, we sent the request forward to you. I didn't see, again, any conflicts related to the zoning ordinance for that particular type of use. There are no exceptional conditions or hardships for that particular property, and it's not the primary use for the property, so I don't anticipate any, them not deriving any reasonable use, nor will this particular approval of this variance request set a precedent, if you will, for what is zone rural development. So ultimately, the staff recommendation is approval, just on, with the consideration that they need to locate that structure in the appropriate place on the lot that accessory structures are required to be located.
The appropriate place is the same as their proposed location?
Where it's currently located is not where accessory structures should be, which are, which is in the front, so I didn't want to give the impression that if they just enclose it, it can stay where it is. So it needs to move where accessory structures inside the rear.
They've got a proposed location here. Is that?
That's not where it should be. It needs to be behind or to the rear of the primary structure as an accessory structure.
I'm not reading, I'm sorry, I have the other one open, but from my reading of that application the first time, they intended to move that north, which would be behind the church structure, I thought, close to their other auxiliary building back there?
When I was looking, I did a glance, it was not clear to me, but I just wanted to make sure that it does not stay where it is currently located, which is in front, in terms of looking at the pictures of where it is on site, just so that it's clear.
Uh, okay. Do you have the original application?
No, I've got, I've got the application ready.
Can I see that?
Yeah. Yep, still facial. It's minutes. Is this? This says, in their application, it said, moving the carport out of sight and closing it in for security for our mini bonus has been vandalized since it needs to be protected. It's currently, it's very visible, but the new location will be less visible but more secure. And I saw another something, an attachment or an addendum or some of the other things that were, where they were intending to relocate that out of the parking lot now, and move it around behind that, there's a brick structure down there by, what were those? Tennis courts?
Recreation.
Recreation facility, something like that. They wanted to move this facility down there by those buildings and, and the tennis court, which is even less visible from the highway or streets than the location they have now.
Right, and that's what I'm just saying. That's where it needs to be. That's where it should have even been the first time.
And that's where they want to go with it, so if they do that, we're okay with it.
You're, you're fine, right. It's in compliance with the ordinance.
Yeah, I'm just a little concerned that this picture that was submitted shows a proposed location that isn't what the city is recommend, rendering approval for.
Well, should we put that in the approval, then, subject to it being relocated back to?
Well, we, I, if we're going to approve it, then I think we need to approve it based on the location that the city requires.
How, how are you going to delineate that for, for true referencing?
So essentially, when it comes in for building?
Yes.
Then we'll evaluate the site plan then, and certainly notify them that it has to comply with zoning, so that, that's part of the building plan review process, is to do a zoning compliance review.
All right, so your, your statement five carries over and states that, as an accessory used to detach carport must be moved behind the church with remaining setback requirements, and you will enforce that?
Correct.
Okay.
I accept the amendment.
Second. With the, with the setback as we stated.
Stipulation that they? A stipulation that they comply with the zoning ordinance in all other aspects?
Say so, agree.
All right, we have a motion?
So agree.
Second, aye, second.
All in favor? Now, to the beat of the night. Vicky?
Yes, this is case number 0416. The applicant is the Ferber Company Inc. The address of the property is 700 Highway 61, Villarica, Georgia. The owner of the property is Carrollton Outpark Development LLC. This application is being represented by Mr. Daryl Ray, the Ray Company. Currently, the property is vacant, undeveloped, with surrounding commercial uses. There's a restaurant and a car wash that's over there. This request is to reduce the minimum required parking from 68.3 spaces to 40 parking spaces. The request is specifically related to the UDC Section 4.03 of the Minimum Required Parking. Again, I've done just the variance evaluation, and I don't see that granting the parking variance will substantially conflict with the city code. The Unified Development Code does explicitly allow for consideration of parking requests when it's a multi-tenant situation, where you can evaluate whether those individual uses, whether their projected peak demands are being offset by each other, so that's part of what their application that they are presenting. There aren't any exceptional hardships that are created by this property. It's just a, a smaller commercial parcel, so it has, of course, meet all of the typical commercial considerations, but part of that is the parking that is set for you based upon the uses. The applicant can still derive reasonable use of the property without approval of the variance. They still have the opportunity to present something, something that is a commercial Granting the variance will not necessarily set a precedent, because again, as I mentioned, consideration can be given based upon multi-tenant uses and evaluation of parking demand. Ultimately, staff recommendation is approval.
Does the applicant have any comments they'd like to make?
Good evening, board members. My name is Steve Lipowski. I'm with the Ferber Company, and as Vicky stated, we have a multi-tenant, mixed-use type project. We have two restaurants, and an office space, and a retail space, and we, we presented in our application some calculations based on parking demand, based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers methodology, and as well applied that to the Unified Development Code to show how these uses interact with each other from a parking demand perspective. From a user standpoint, we have Starbucks, which is typically a busy in the morning, and below them, we have Sprint, which is steady, low demand throughout the business hours, and then below them, we have Office Space, which is landmark. They're steady, low demand throughout the day, business hours, and then Mose, which is, you know, open for lunch and dinner. They're not open during Starbucks' peak hours. So we presented a chart just showing more or less how these uses interact with each other with, with capacity-demand factors published by the University, I mean, the Urban Land Institute, showing how much parking, peak parking these uses are expected to generate. And I believe you guys have all that information, just to show how these uses interact, and I should also add that all these tenants have seen the site plan and approved the site plan. If you guys have any questions, are you happy to answer them?
I have one question. I heard you say doing peak hours in Mose, and are you just specifically talking about Mose? Because I know that place is congested.
Yeah, but Mose is open from about 11:00 in the morning to about 9:00 at night. So Starbucks' peak hours are typically between the hours of 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM, so they're not expected to generate as, as peak, peak demand during Mose' peak hours.
So we're looking at this down the road, when the, when the influx of people coming to Villarica? Because everybody drinks when Starbucks come here, you know? I just think that Starbucks is going to be a hit.
I should also add that Starbucks does have a drive-through, which I would guesstimate that more than 50% of their business is conducted through the drive-through.
Okay, well, I see a lot of millennials, and when you see millennials, they sit in at Starbucks.
At 6:00 o'clock at night, too.
And some geezers, too. And some geezers, too.
It's been my experience at Starbucks, that the parking lot is full and the line is 20 people long at the register, yes, that's a.
About 0%, definitely not.
Um, Mr.?
Lipowski.
Lipowski?
Lipowski, yes.
Would you introduce the other two members who are with you?
This is Daryl Ray with Hughes Ray Company, who's our engineer, and this is Perry Coward, also with the Ferber Company.
Oh, you do. I appreciate the ULI study and having the engineer. You know, I have never seen a developer who, who's project engineer or appraiser ever argued against their case, so I'm sure you've got some good support there, which is, I want to, I want to draw on some of that, because according to my little calculator, it says that the requested parking is 41% below the code standard. And I believe that's right. It's a reduction from 68.3 down to 40. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's a 41% reduction in available parking. And the site is somewhat landlocked in that it has only, it has Bojangles to the south, and the parking lot to the north, and only one method of ingress and egress. Is that correct?
Well, there's a access easement through the southern portion of our site that connects, I guess it's Reed Road or Tolberg Road?
Reed, Reed Road, yep.
With Highway 61?
Yeah, but, I mean, coming out of your property, going onto that road, there's one driveway.
Correct.
And it's shared with the car wash.
That's correct.
Now, don't get me wrong, don't get me wrong, I, I love those businesses. I, I love to have Mose, in fact, I love to have Mose there closer to Rial Lake where I live. But, but I am concerned that this is a landlocked parcel with very limited access, ingress and egress, and that no matter what the projections are, I know that reality has a very unfortunate way of coming back and biting us in tender spots, and, you know, I don't want to see fistfights out there in the parking lot between people trying to get to and from the car wash, and people trying to get out of the Starbucks' drive-through line, and other people saying, no, that's my parking place, you know, out there, and, you know, wow, guys, because I, when I looked at it, I'm looking like, here are the existing parking spaces over here next to the swale, over there next to 61, and then here's the driveway that's now going to be shared with everybody in this development, and then over here are the straight pull-in spaces that go to this development. That looks tight to me.
With, with regards to the ingress egress? I mean, I'm not sure if you've been by the site, but our site is, is?
Yes, I have.
Is a graded pad and Reed Road behind us, and even the, the driveway connecting, the access easement connecting Reed Road to our, that, that access easement through the site, it's seven, eight feet above our site. So, I mean, putting a driveway in there, it's really not feasible from an engineering standpoint.
I agree.
And, I mean, I believe that, that access is, you know, it's always been contemplated that there'd be a commercial development on the site, its own commercial, and that would be a shared driveway with the car wash to the north, and the car wash to the north has nothing, no other driveways connecting to it.
No. True. I certainly, my concern is I don't want this to be a source of irritation to the property owner, the tenants, or the customers, or other citizens who are trying to make use of it, and I'm concerned that it's just going to be tight, tight, tight. And I'm not sure in good conscience that I can say I believe it deserves that, that variance. I, it pains me to say that, but I, you know, I'm looking for some excuse to say this, this is going to be okay, and we're not going to have some fender benders out here from people trying to get through, or tempers getting lost, but if we approve it as it is, I don't know that I would feel comfortable going in there to use it.
Can I, can I just add that, according to the ITE, Institute of Transportation Engineers, they classify this type of development as a, as a strip generator, under 30,000 square feet of commercial, and the average parking supply for those sites, which is in the packet that is part of our application, is 4.1 spaces per thousand square feet, GFA. Our application is 5.33 spaces per thousand square feet, so, I mean, I hope that helps.
I know, but, you know, a lot of those other developments that it uses in its universe to compare are adjacent to other sites, or they're not, they have, they're not limited to one driveway ingress egress, they're not, I mean, you know, their statistic, the universe of their statistical base is not all exactly like this site, and, and I have misgivings about the traffic flow there. At peak times, that drive-through driveway is going to be completely full. At peak times, that drive-through driveway is going to be completely full. And how many employees do you project having in those four businesses in that building?
Starbucks has. Starbucks has about six employees. Mose has about six to seven on a shift. And Sprint and Landmark, I can't imagine they'd have more.
Let's just say another eight. Total four, four would be twenty. And boom, there are half of the parking places allotted to that building.
I'm Barry Coward with the Ferber Company, and I appreciate the concern. I was a vice president of real estate at Waffle House for twenty years, and there's probably on the busiest shift at Waffle House on Saturday morning, there's probably ten employees. And if you go out and count the parking space in the Waffle House, you're going to see twenty to twenty-five. And we don't recall any fistfights in the parking lot, but it's notorious, there's a big, big history there of sixty years of Waffle House utilizing those type sites. Let me go back a little bit on the history of this deal. We got this property under contract over a year ago, and it was a Starbucks-driven property that put us on the site, said we'd like to be in Villarica. This is where we want to be. Let's see if you can do the deal for us. And we put it together. It took us a while to get the tenants, and a lot of it was based upon the new Kroger that's supposedly planned across the street. However.
We've all seen that going up.
However, that's not, that's been put on hold. And luckily, Starbucks is still willing to play. And what you got to understand also is most of the tenants are parking sensitive. And knowing that Starbucks and Mose are comfortable with this parking configuration is good to know as well. Obviously, everyone likes to have more parks, but.
I was like, is we getting out? I didn't see the light flash. We need to have the audio for the video recording, the mics.
Okay. So I guess where I'm going with this is early on the process, our engineers did a site investigation report, which we were, again, working under the previous parking ordinance, which was relayed to all of our tenants. And obviously, there's been a new ordinance passed that we unfortunately didn't know about until we went in for a pre-op. And, you know, we're to the point now of signing the leases with our tenants and under those, the site plan that we have now, and to unfortunately to have to go back and redo this, we would lose the deal. We'd lose the Starbucks and the Mose. Just giving you that information.
Well, let's talk just a little bit about back on the road.
Okay.
And I'm actually reading, I'm not going to be editorial about the parking so much, as it is about the ownership of the road. I see the property line running down the crossroad, which would be the road between, or drive between you and Bojangles, between Reed Road and sixty-one, which is the main ingress egress point to Georgia sixty-one.
Right.
The property line runs down the middle of the driveway. Okay? Who's going to own and maintain both sides of the driveway? And will you acknowledge that the city has no obligation to maintain the driveway? All the, the Georgia Department of Transportation has the obligation to maintain the ingress egress point, and the city has an obligation to maintain the access point on driveway? And the tenants have the obligation to maintain the property
Right.
between the two roads, which will be driven upon by the motor in public.
Right. There is a joint maintenance agreement in place on that property.
Because we don't want to hear, because the first thing we're going to hear is nine one one, somebody ran in my car, where are you?
Right.
Private property.
Right.
You guys write it up, change your insurance, go on your merry way. Wait, wait, wait. I want a police report.
Right.
No. So.
Well, fortunately, again, there is a joint maintenance agreement on the property where everyone pays their pro-rata share based on square footage of the three lots that were there.
The access into O'Charley's is kind of narrow, too, but I haven't seen any problems there.
O'Charley's?
O'Charley's.
Off the street.
It's just the one road alongside the restaurant itself. It's fairly narrow, and then big business. I haven't seen the issues there. Has any?
Well, the intersection, not your intersection, but the intersection back going into O'Charley's and Napa and behind the Social Security Administration building is.
Well, the same.
And it's going to have a lot more impact, a lot more traffic.
This intersection, yeah, going on Tolbert Road is the same kind of problem.
Yeah. Well, there's a, I don't know how many, there's another hundred houses scheduled for Twin Oaks. Is that correct, approximately?
I can't see you off the.
Yeah, all I saw was lot number one hundred back there. So we've got another hundred vehicles coming back through on that road. So you're probably going to see a road improvement somewhere down the road, down the future if we build that way with you.
Yeah, but that wouldn't affect this application exactly.
No, it's not. But we're trying to talk about the future.
Yeah.
Question, I think.
All right. Any more discussion?
I would say the address, Tom's, you know, the ingress egress issue, I mean, it has ingress egress as two access points. I mean, one in and out on sixty-one and one on Reed Road. I don't expect the one on Reed Road to be used as much as the one on sixty-one. I mean, they're going to be, if you're watching sixty-one in the morning, it's, as a person who takes this cut through every morning, I might be a little peebed by the fact that it won't be as easy as it is now, but it's pretty hard already because sixty-one just lines up with traffic. And I would suspect they're trying to generate, pull a lot of that traffic, the morning traffic. Another thing is, as much as I don't agree that, you know, at five o'clock in the evening that they're going to have zero demand over there at the Starbucks, I don't believe, though, that the demand will be high enough if you take in, if you put in, you know, fifty percent demand here. I don't think it's going to push it, using their chart, I don't think it's going to push it above the fifty or forty slots that they have designated for. I mean, I think at six o'clock, thirty-one, I mean, you might have nine cars in there, but I don't know. And it's forty plus ten parking stalls for a parking lot, for a drive-through, excuse me, so I don't know. I know it.
You can't park in there.
Right, yeah, you can't park in there, but I think the idea is that, you know, maybe if somebody can't park, they'll just go to the drive-through or something of that nature as an alternative parking spot. I know the forty-one percent number sounds a lot, but I don't know, just looking at the layout, it doesn't, it doesn't look as bad as it sounds, if you will.
Okay, well, I, let me ask just one, sort of a tangential.
Is Ferber the owner of the raw land?
Yeah, Ferber will be purchasing the land and.
Oh, so somebody else owns it now?
Right.
Ferber's purchasing it from somebody.
Under contract to purchase.
And Ferber's going to do the development and continue on as the landlord?
Right.
Does Ferber own the Bojangles site?
No, sir.
Or the car wash site?
No, sir.
So there's three other, or there's three total landowners involved in the use of this.
Right. But there's also the agreement, as I mentioned, in place, knowing that there would be future commercial development. And they've got notice. Yeah.
Thanks. I don't have any more questions.
The other two landowners haven't appeared, so.
And presumably, they received a letter. The letters, so.
Does counsel have any comment, insight, wisdom?
No, I have nothing to add above what y'all have already asked.
So do I have a motion to approve?
Both accept, approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Vicki, are there any additional staff comments?
I have no additional staff comments.
Any other comments from the board?
No.
Is there a motion to adjourn? All right.
Sorry, my cough has gotten me here today. I just, for the group, would like to ask a general question. Has anyone heard more about the fate of this board in the rewriting of the city charter?
I can answer that since I'm the one who drew it up. There is a draft, and it should have been posted on the city webinar.
It is. There is one out there, but it pretty well is the death mill for us.
Well, it's a draft, and I anticipate that there will be public hearings on it. I suspect there will be public comment. If this board has a comment that would like to keep the board in place, then I think you should make it. I've been impressed. I enjoyed watching you all tonight. You did exactly, you did a good job as a board substantively discussing things. And I don't know that there is any push one way or the other.
It's not like they're paying us.
Yeah, it's not like they're paying. But in the current edition that's posted now, they've redlined out the ZBA.
The current draft does do that, yes. I mean, there's no reason to hide that. The current draft does go back to the way that the city had been acting back before it discovered that we were still using the BZA. But I have, I personally have no strong feeling one way or the other. The UDC is written up so that these decisions would go to the county, to the city council, rather than to the Board of Zoning Administration. So we've got to do one of two things, either fix the charter and do away with you, or amend the UDC to provide that variance request come to you. One of two steps have to be taken. I have no firm feeling one way or the other. In the public discussion, we'll see whether or not there is a groundswell of support to breathe new life into you or not.
More reason to come to the city council meetings and participate in public comments.
I don't know of anybody that's got an agenda to do away with you.
Do we have a meeting for next month scheduled?
We don't know yet.
Okay. And so the December first is off?
No, we're not doing the December first or second. Right now, the regularly scheduled meeting stands until Rhonda lets us know if she has business for us or not.
So far, but they may got two weeks.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
We are adjourned.